Welcome to School Days, help for moms and dads of school aged kids. I'm Danita Bailey.
And I'm David Bailey.
As a mom of three school aged kids and a wife of a former teacher, I've always wondered how to best vote in a way that would impact my children's education. So I'd research the candidates and try to make sense of what was available to me, but in the end, I really never felt like I was confident that I'd made the right decisions and done what I needed to do to impact their education. But recently, I came across an article on GreatSchools.org and here's how it started.
Ready? Here we go.
This article is called "What Every Parent Should Know About Their School Board." And it starts off, "Yawn, do school boards seem boring or irrelevant? Not so fast. These few people have the power to shape your child's education. You, oh wait, is this a familiar scene? You, responsible citizen, are standing at a ballot box along with voting on important local measures. You come across a list of names running for the school board. You scan the list and realize that most, if not all, of the names are unfamiliar. Hmm, you think, I have no idea how to vote. Really? Does it matter? It's just the school board." So the article went on to talk about the responsibilities of the school board and that voting for its members can be one of the most critical elections that makes a difference in the day-to-day life of your child. So I really, to be real honest, have been like that. I have not thought much about the school board. What about you?
Well, I know they exist and actually the irony of it is my father was on the school board back in Pittsburgh.
You never told me that.
I didn't.
I don't think so.
Well, I can't, you know, share everything with you at once.
I want you to share it all at once. No surprises.
We still got a long ways to go, so.
I hope so.
I gotta, I gotta, hey.
No, I just meant, no, we could die.
Okay, thanks, babe.
Okay, keep it moving. I do love you.
Yes, thank you, babe. So anyway, he'd go to his meetings and come back home and I never knew what he did. He was on board for years, maybe 10 years or so, 10 plus years.
Wow.
And that was my father. And so, you know, then I got in the classroom and, you know, they'd say, come to, of course, come to the meetings and then we had PTA appreciation week. And we'd, you know, give, give some donuts and orange juice and pat him on the back and say, "Thank you for your service." That's about it. That's about all I got.
Yeah.
And, and, and I taught for 10 years.
Right.
So, yeah.
And do you get the emails from, so our kids are in Mansfield ISD and I get me emails probably once a month saying that the school board meeting's coming up and I hadn't paid any attention to them at this point, up until this point. Do you get them also?
I'm not a good email checker.
Oh, that is a very valid point.
Yeah, so maybe.
Right.
Yes, I mean, I did see on the school signs, you know, "We love our, our PTA." I saw that.
The PTA?
I mean, not PTA.
Oh, okay, you meant school board.
Yeah, I meant school board, yes, yeah, because it was School Board Appreciation Week.
Oh, gotcha.
There's PTA appreciation, appreciation week and then there's School Board Appreciation Week.
Okay.
Or something like that. "We love our PTA," something like that. Anyway.
Okay, so.
That's why you guys are here.
Right, no, but I mean, our, our school board elections are coming up May 4th. And, you know, because of this article, honestly, I am really interested in finding out more about the people that are running and making sure that I make a really good choice about who's running our school boards because it's important.
Right.
Yeah. So with the show, we're not necessarily trying to get you to attend a school board meeting, although that would be great. And we're not necessarily trying to get you to run for the school board, although that would be great too. But what we want this episode to do is to give you the knowledge to see the value of your local school board and the tools to choose candidates that will work in your best interest and in the best interest of your family and your community. So before we go any further, we want to say, it does take a village. If you hear a great parenting tip or nugget of advice, share it with your parent friends. Facebook it, Instagram it, tweet it, link it in and add the hashtag #SchoolDaysShow or hashtag IamSchoolDays. And also, if you want to be a part of the show, we would love for you to call in with any questions or comments that you have. You're gonna have, the phone call to call, or the phone number to call is 214-431-5062. So Dave, will you introduce our first guest?
Yes, I would like to introduce Randy Randall. Randy is a lifelong resident of Irving. He attended Otis Brent Elementary School, Bowie Junior High School and graduated from Nemets High School. Randy attended the University of Texas at Arlington and received a business administration degree in accounting. That was the one course that, that was the thorn in my side, accounting.
I can imagine.
God bless you. So Mr. Randall has been married to Linda for 24 years and has two sons who attended Irving schools. Randy has long, has long, long been serving in leadership roles in both our schools and our community. He has served as PTA fundraising chairman, band booster president and chairman of baseball concessions for the Booster Club. Do they still sell sandwiches and stuff at band booster things? When I was in band, you had to sell like the, I don't know what they call them here, they call them hoagies where I come from, like the sandwiches, they still, they still sell the subs?
Still sell them.
Really?
Well, sometimes they'll get a Subway, we'll provide them now.
Yeah.
Chick, we do a lot of Chick-fil-A sandwiches now.
Really? Hmm, okay, yeah, I'm, yeah, flashbacks, pedaling the streets trying to get, get my money to go on my band trips, anyway. And Randy has served on two campus improvement committees and the district improvement committee. Randy served on the Irving City Council for six years and was chairman of the finance committee. He also served as chairman of the City of Irving Bond Task Force. Randy is in his sixth year as an Irving School Board trustee and is currently serve, serving as president of the board. Randy has attended the same church for 56 years. Hmm, that is, wow, that's awesome. And has served as a trustee as well as chairman of the building committee. Randy works in the family business, which has been in Irving for 56 years. So Randy is in the community.
That's right.
Very, very connected. So thank you for being here, Randy.
My pleasure. Looking forward to it.
And our other guest is News Hot High. She's had an educational background of over 35 years. She has spent her professional career as a teacher, principal, board of trustees and has founded several educational institutions. She and her husband have been involved with the Irving community in various capacities since 1989. She has five children and five grandchildren. Throughout her career, she has worked with parents, teachers, school leaders and community members to help students succeed. She continues to serve the Irving ISD and the community for the betterment of future generations. Thanks so much for coming.
Thank you for inviting me.
Yeah, so let's just jump right in.
All right, so why did you guys decide to run for school board? You know, you're very, both very busy people. It's unpaid, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes, let's get that right.
I get no money for doing this.
Out of the goodness of your heart.
Yes, I need a stipend or a sandwich or something. But this is truly a labor of love. So why did you guys decide to even run for school board?
Well, I actually helped a candidate run. I was, served as his treasurer several years ago and saw him kind of go through the process and after he got elected, he, fortunately, he didn't get elected and he's, in fact, he's just going, just went off the board this last year. He started working on me for about a year that I need to be on the school board.
Hmm.
That I've, I've got, been in Irving a long time and, and so I started really doing a little research on where we were as a district. After my kids got out of school, I didn't pay a whole lot of attention to it either. But realized that we, we had some work we needed to do. We were, we were not really going in the right direction as far as our student achievements and where we needed to be with our kids and teacher morale and, you know, just several issues that just really weren't where I felt we needed to be. So I decided to go for it and fortunately, I did have an opponent the first year I ran and.
You crushed them.
Well, I won. So I've been serving ever since and it's been, I've got, I do have a, three grandchildren in, in the public schools in Irving. I do have, I have a niece that lives with us who is an eighth grader.
Okay.
So I'm a little different than a lot of board members, especially my age, that I went through the school system in Irving. My wife did, my two sons did. I have, I have a student still in my house and with grandkids still in the same district. So I've got a very personal vested interest to do, to do right by them and all the other 33,000 students that we have.
Wow, 30, that's a lot, yes.
My journey was a little different, but probably the same passion and intent. I live in the community. My kids were older, of course, married, but I've been asked for a couple of years now to run for the school board. And when the opportunity came up this last year, I thought it was important because a lot of our community was actually moving out into neighboring school districts. And so that affects your economy, it affects, it affects your, you know, your, your home, home prices. It, it affects the community just leaving and that was not fair. We love Irving, we've been in Irving for so long and so we need, and we know that a school district is one of the biggest attractions for people.
Absolutely, yeah.
One of the things we did whenever we moved was look at the school district first and see if that was a viable place to move. So I decided that we, I needed to get involved. You know, it was a vested interest for me. The school district was the best place to be in. And like Danita said at the beginning of the show, that it really sets the precedence in the city for a lot of, economically, educationally and every which way. So that was my reason for running is to, you know, get involved in the school district and make it better and attract my people back in, into Irving.
That's great, that's great. So what are the responsibilities of the school board? What do you do? What do you do?
Apart from giving up our evenings, we'll tell you. So the school board actually has, it's in the governance. So there's management and governance and the school board is in charge of the governance. And there are three or four basic kind of broad categories that we, we work with. And you want to talk about it, Mr. Randall?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you what this, the legal requirement that we have as a school board and then there's a lot of others besides that, which she could probably speak to also. But legally, according to the state, we hire and fire the superintendent and evaluate the superintendent. That is, that is one of our, that's our main job. We set policy for the district. We set the vision, establish the vision and establish the goals that we want our district to take. And then we also adopt the tax rate and, and vote and adopt our budget. So those are the, what basically the state has given us authority over as a school board. So the only employee that we can hire, fire, have any impact on is the superintendent. But then outside of our legal requirements, there's a lot of other, I guess, duties that you should do as a school board. They're not required, but if you want to be an effective school board, you're, you're doing things out in the community. You're going to events, going to campuses, supporting our programs, supporting our teachers. So there's, you know, there's something you could go to. There's always an event going on some campus every night of the week and, and it's important to try to be out there as much as you can.
Because you are representing your community, right? Your constituents are looking up at you towards building those bridges.
Right.
So that's definitely what we do is, you know, and the more you're involved, the more you're on the ground, the more you know your district.
Yeah, and the needs of the district.
And the needs of the district.
And that includes going to, when you go to the grocery store, when you go to church, people know you're on the school board. So you get a lot of conversations out in the community to, to connect with people and your constituents and students, you know, that, that you know, that you just can have an impact on.
Yeah, that's great. So tell me, kind of walk me through about what happens at a typical board meeting? Because I actually went online, that a lot of the school districts make it easy for you to find out what's going on and Irving ISD is no different.
We stalked you.
They have all of their, yeah.
So actually, there's, there's two major meetings that are streamlined or taped and archived. One is the work session and the board meeting that you probably watched was what you were voting on, on issues that happen in the work session.
Right.
So typically, your, the superintendent will set up an agenda that the president will approve of and they'll send it as a draft. And then, so we get to see, we get to get feedback. And once that agenda is set, that agenda could be things that the school district needs, things, issues that need immediate attention, policies that may need tweaking or new policies. And then we, as a school board, we may have some issues that we want more information on or we want discussion on. So all those things are put on an agenda.
Is that for the work session?
That's for the work session.
Okay.
And the work session and the meeting is the second Tuesday.
Typically, the second and fourth, but it varies from time to time, yes.
So we have that. And so the work session is when we, we are supposed to do a homework and come to the work session. So those agendas, the attachments, addendums, everything is sent to us beforehand. And so you kind of read through them. If you have questions about them, you try to knock it off by calling the right departments and finding answers. And then at the work session is when we sit and we go through all, everything on the agenda. And there are different departments presenting whatever the issues are. And the board meeting is more formal. That's when everything that we needed to vote on, all discussions have happened. So there's no discussion that happens on the third or the fourth week that we meet again, which is the second meeting. And at that time, that's more formal. That's when we do our district recognitions. That's when we, for example, the teacher of the month or the employee of the month, anything the students have achieved, distinctions. If anybody wants to come and address the board, they do it at that time. Superintendent gives her briefing for the, for the month at that time. Anything else I'm missing, Mr. Randall?
No, we try to set it up to where it runs very smoothly, a very positive format. That's the way we operate our meetings and our, our board meetings and our work sessions. That's not to say that all school boards do the same thing. They all have their own procedures and stuff they do. I have heard and we, when we go to training, we've seen case studies where some school boards are not quite so.
Effective.
Effective. And so there can be a lot of discussion and bannering back and forth between board members at board meetings.
Oh.
We prefer to not, we prefer to do that at the work session if we have conversations. When we get to the board meeting, we want to let our public and our teachers know that we're, we're focused on what we need to do for the students and our campuses and we try to present in a very positive format, you know, for our, for our community.
So are the work sessions open to the public?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of them are open to the public. And actually, the agenda is posted a week in advance. So everybody can actually, so if anybody wants to attend and wants to be a part of it, wants to give some feedback, then they can do that at that time because everything has been posted publicly.
They can at the work session? Okay. Is that typical?
There's not public comment at the work session.
Okay.
But they can reach out to an individual board member if they, they will see the agenda items and all the documentation that we receive is also released to the public at least three to four days before the meeting. So you can go on our website, you can download anything you want to look at. So you can see what we're going to be talking about. If there's something that is parents passionate about or got some thoughts or ideas on, they can reach out to the board by email or phone calls and give us their input. Then we talk about it at the work session. And if we've had any additional comments or inputs from individuals, we'll, we can bring them, as a board member, we can bring those to the meeting. It is public, so there's people maybe sitting out in the audience watching the board meeting or they can watch it on the, on the, online. And then we have a week before we come back to take formal action. So there's a week after the work session that we can continually receive input from parents or constituents. If they heard or saw something that we're going to be voting on, they have still plenty of time to reach out to us and say, "Hey, we don't like what you're doing here."
Right.
Or, or we support what you're doing here. We got some, you know, some different ideas. So there's a lot of time that, that people can reach out to us to give us some input before we actually take final action.
Right, so it sounds like if I, as a parent or a concerned citizen, have something that we want to maybe get on the agenda or get in front of you guys, we do that before the work session so that you, you can have the opportunity to bring that before the board at that time?
Well, the agenda is set.
Okay.
Okay, but if you have comments or concerns, issues about what's on the agenda, absolutely.
Okay.
But if you wanted to put something on the agenda, then that would be completely a different scenario.
How does that happen?
For something, like for something later on, like maybe a few months out, let's say I wanted, I had something I was concerned about with my school or with the district or something and I came to you and said, "Hey, we need to address this."
How do you get that on the agenda for a work session?
So if it's something more personal, then we try and solve that. The superintendent will reach out to you or the department heads will reach out to you or the directors will reach out to you and we'll try to work that out. But if it's an agenda item, let's say a policy or something curriculum related or something that you want to address.
Yeah.
Then that is passed on to the superintendent. Even if you come to us, then we will pass it down back to the superintendent and say, "This is a concern." And at that time, if it's an agenda item that really needs a discussion and work and presentation, then she'll put it on the agenda.
Gotcha.
But if you had a personal issue, you know, this is happening at my school or if like bullying or, you know.
Right.
Anything that's more personal related, then somebody will reach out to you from within the district.
So you wouldn't pull up like, "Mr. Bailey's son was bullied at school and..."
On a work session, no.
No. Man, okay.
We, we would not deal, deal with that. Now, that specific incident, we would not deal with on an agenda item. But the more broader picture, what are we doing regarding bullying in our district?
Cyberbullying and.
Then that we would bring to the board as a work session item and we would discuss it and have this administration tell us, "What are we doing? This is a concern we're hearing. And so what are we doing as a district to, to have some, some impact on that, a positive impact on that? And then we can get presented on that and give ideas and share ideas on whether we think we need to do more or differently.
Right.
And so that's kind of how it works. When you, once the agenda is posted, we as a board, because of the Texans, Texas Opens Meetings Act, we can only discuss the items on the agenda.
Gotcha, okay.
So if there is an item that is not on the agenda that comes up, like at the public forums where people can speak to us for three minutes, if an item comes up there that we might need to look at, then we will reach out to that individual and then we may put that on a future agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
To discuss.
And so after the work session, if I, if there's something that I still have concerns about, then I would contact one of you guys so that, you know, maybe to sway your vote or is that kind of the purpose of that?
Sure, you can give us your thoughts and opinions and say, "Hey, I don't think you have a, you know, I don't, you know." And we get that from, from different folks from time to time, but decisions that we're making, you know, they may say, "I don't think you really understand how that's going to impact us in the classroom." Let's say a teacher reaches out to us. So they give us some insight and feedback at times, as well as parents on how it's going to affect their students. And, and so we, you know, we, we, we take that into account and we, you know, it's not always just set in stone where it's going to click off yeses every time.
Right.
We, we.
We can pull, we can pull from the agenda for voting also. So let's say there's an issue that came up that even though it was designed in the work session, but issues happened between then and the voting session, then that's something that we can request the president, "Mr. Randall, can we pull this from the agenda for voting?" And we can pull that.
For further discussion?
And we can go back and do some, we can go back and do some more work on it. We're not, we're not ready to make a vote on this. That, that's the way we handle it. Because I don't want to take, as president, I don't want to bring an item to the board. And I know there's some questions out there, so I don't want to bring an item to a board meeting. And we're going to have a lot of discussion about it and it may or may not pass. I would rather pull it and let's take it back to the work session and let's do some more work on it. Let's get some more input from folks and let's, let's clean it up to where it's something that we can all fully support. Because when, when we all support it, it's just a much better thing for our district and our students.
Yeah.
And usually we do that. We kind of all, you know, if, if we have discussions, we can not agree to disagree, but then we all try to see the bigger picture, how it's going to impact the student achievement. And then we all decide to kind of, you know, agree in it. That doesn't mean, like you said, everybody votes a yes, but we do, if we can get a majority on it.
Right. Is there a particular type of person or people that either come to the work sessions? You tend to see like, is it mostly teachers? Do you see parents? I mean, so i- is it a, I guess, a multiple of different people from different demographics or what's the typical profile of a person who actually is involved and engaged in what you guys are going through?
I'm going to, when we make, we do also have presentations to students or teacher groups that have won some award or have done something, you know, good in the district. So we recognize, recognitions that we do. That brings a lot of people in to watch their student get recognized for academic decathlon or state band, you know, tournament they went through. So we get a lot of people in for that, but then once the awards are over, they, you know, they tend to leave. So what's left is, you know, public, people that have an interest in either a particular item on the agenda. We really don't have a whole lot of folks that are there to watch the work session, unfortunately. I mean, in my opinion, it'd be great to have a room full.
How many people do you think would show up for a typical work session?
That are.
Two hundred, three hundred?
That are not part of the staff are part of our.
Maybe five, six.
Hundred?
Five or six.
Five or six individuals, wow.
Yeah, so it's.
But, but a lot of people watch it online. A lot of people.
Really?
I know, I know a lot of teachers and principals actually watch it livestreamed.
Okay.
I would say most of our employees are edu, you know, they, they watch it. They know what we're doing.
Okay.
Now, parents, not so much and unless they have a complaint, then that's, they'll be there to watch and see what's going on or something, so.
How, how do you feel about that? About parents not knowing, you know, being informed, you know, is it, is it like, is it, well, hey, you're missing out or we really would love for the, you know, for more people to get involved.
No, so this is just one avenue, one way for them to get informed.
Okay, yeah.
But there are several ways that we disseminate information to parents about what's going on. We have the Insider, which is the newspaper, no, I mean, the newsletter, then we have the social media. We have events, we have engaging events for parents. So this is, this is probably the most uninteresting part for them, where, you know, business is being discussed, but where it's more engaging, where it's more meaningful to them. There are several, several engagements and like you said, almost every evening, there's an event on campuses going on. We're pulling parents in, we're informing them.
Yeah.
And then there's emails that go out, there is flyers that go out. So parents are still engaged as to what's going on in the district. And we even do surveys. I, you know, we've done a survey a few months ago when school started, you know, are you getting enough information? Do you feel like you are well-informed? So we do those surveys also.
That's great.
So are school boards partisan? Are they Republican or?
But he had a really good answer for that one.
Yeah, I, I was, I would say yes. They should be partisan to our students and teachers.
Ah, that's good.
Other than that, there should be no partisan.
Yeah.
You know, we, we here to service all kids, every one of those.
All of those things that you hear and see in the, in the news media above the local level.
Uh huh.
Does not exist.
Those shouldn't, those should not exist at, at a local school district. I mean, our kids are kids, our parents are parents. We're trying to teach them all and that, that should be the focus. And that's really what you should look for in a school board member.
And that's, that's something that I'm, you know, I can say.
That's good.
Being a new board member, I'm really proud of this team that we have because if you look at our work sessions and board meetings, 75% of what we're talking about is student achievement. And that's what a school's focus, any board should be, is 75% of your meetings should be about student achievement.
Yeah.
And so this is, this is, I think it's a blessing that we have in the Irving School Board is that every one of us, and it's a team of eight because the superintendent and the seven of us are very geared towards that. We're very focused on that.
Good. So as a parent, you know, one of the things you said we wouldn't want to bring up is, you know, the Baileys bullying issue. But what are some issues that are relevant that you would want to bring to a school board member as a parent or a community member?
Is it for the actual school board meetings or just as general to the school board?
Well, if I'm going to contact a school board member because I have a concern, what are some concerns that you guys would be able to do something about? How can you guys help?
Well, I think, for example, the bullying thing, since that's kind of an example that was brought up. I think you want to make sure if, if that's something you feel is going on with one of your students, I think you want to really make sure you understand what the district is doing regarding that issue on campuses, on your, on your students' campus as well as all across the district. And so I think that's something that you could take to a board member that could try to explain to you or get a, get our staff to let, show a parent, this is what we're doing. And, and then, you know, we get feedback from individuals regarding that, whether we need to do more or something different.
Yeah.
So that's one avenue. I think another situation that would, a parent would be discipline. Too much, too little? That's always a question. And, and so that's feedback we can get from parents, whether we, and how we handle our discipline or in-school suspensions. So that's, those are not policies specifically that we set, but they're guidelines and they're procedures that we do vote on that we, that our district uses. So we have an impact on that. What would be some others that we might, as a board?
We've been, like, for example, we've been redoing a football field. And so there was a, you know, if, if anybody feels, and we've had people that felt, well, this is impacting my backyard or whatever. And then they'll bring it to our attention. And, but also a lot of times we'll get concerns that are really for the city and not for the school board.
Okay.
And so those are the things that we hear them, you know, but, but then we go back to them later on and explain to them, well, this is a city issue. It's not a board issue.
Okay.
But, but the good thing is their, parents have been good about emailing us if they have a concern. They either, a couple of board members or they'll send it to all seven of us. And then what we do is we reach back to the superintendent because you always have to remember, we. Because you always have to remember, we are governance, we are not management. And there's a very fine line between governance and management. We cannot pa- you know, go below that line, but the superintendent can come up on that line because she helps us set those policies. So I think we've been very good about uh, remembering where, where, what the boundaries are. But we, the, the school board, I think all of us are really uh, good about following up. If we had a concern and we passed it on, we always go back and say, well, what happened? Is everything okay? There was a solution read? What was the resolution? So it's been, that, that's how it goes. If you have a concern that you think, you know, my needs are not being met by the teacher, the principal or the superintendent, and I wanna go all the way up to the board, absolutely you can. But then what we've tried to do is keep the perspective in mind, which is governance, which is management, but try and definitely find a, a solution for that.
But it's important for them to kinda go through the proper channels first.
Always, right? For anything, there's a protocol and it's, and we, we do advise them, you know, there's a protocol, did you go to this?
Talk to the teacher first, principal, vice principal.
Have you talked to your teacher? Have you talked to the principal and have you worked your way up? And if they've done all of that and they still just feel like they're getting their brush off for whatever reason, then you certainly reach out to a board member and then we can certainly make sure the superintendent's aware of that. And I would say our staff is tremendous about jumping on a concern and reaching out to the parents to try to resolve it. And most times it's, you know, somewhere in the process, there were just some miscommunication.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're just joining us, we're talking to Randy Randall and News Hut Hi from the Irving ISD School Board. So give us a call if you have any questions or comments at two one four, four three one, five zero, six two. So what are some of the main things that you guys deal with? I know you have budgets that you approve and what are kind of the, the topics of things that school boards are gonna handle?
You wanna talk about the committees?
Yeah, we have uh, certain committees that we set, that the board has, that, you know, every district will have some and they can vary. But we have a finance committee that has board members on it. Uh, then we have a policy committee. And we have an audit committee. Uh, we have what's called an excellent now committee, which is really a more of a recognition committee for uh, awards.
We, we've set up a committee for data, you know, just tracking data and making decisions based on that data. Um, and I think this is unique to our district from what I'm seeing because I've attended, you know, vast conferences and this is something that, you know, we do is we, we set up these committees. So, you know, everybody can focus on maybe what is their strength. Because remember, everybody on that board is not an educator. So everybody may not be able to know what goes into making those decisions. So if, but we, we kinda find what is your strength and what is your strength? The kind of, you know, people take up committees and so we can focus really on what's needed.
And what kind of decisions are you guys making? Like with the data committee, what kind of data are they pulling and?
So for example, um, one of the datas that we are working on right now is just the scores, right? Because we have several assessments. Star is only at the end of the year, which is really, you know, doesn't impact how, you know, once a student is done, is done. What do you do? But throughout the year, we have district assessment, we have map assessments, and so those datas come back to us. And then we, you know, we will, the, the committee or even the whole board, you know, it's an open committee, anybody can come and join. Um, we sit with the people in charge of those data and then we talk about it, you know, if there's equity going on or if there is a student gap, you know, what are we doing about that gap? So I think at the end of the day, what we want is accountability. You know, I may be sitting on finance committee and not knowing anything about finance, right? But then just me being there sets up a, a, a bar for accountability. And so once accountability is there, then everybody, you know, i- is doing what they're supposed to be doing. But once we, you drop the ball on accountability, then, you know, you have a communication gap, you don't know what's going on and you know, if I know I'm not accountable to anybody, I can do my job. It sometimes doesn't get done. But so we set up these committees for accountability because at the end of the day, we are accountable for the whole district. Right? So we want to make sure that we cover our bases, we set up. So when we look at these scores for exams and for the test, well, you know, if this is nothing, do we need to put more resources here? And so we support our campuses, our teachers, our superintendent. You tell us what you need, we are here to support you.
And one of the things that we're working on right now, this time of year is especially during this year where it's a legislative year. With the legislature meet, meeting, of course, there's a lot of news going on about the school finance. Well, that's obviously gonna impact our district as will all districts. So we're having to kinda monitor what's going on there. So we know how it's gonna affect us and how it will affect our tax rate, how it's gonna affect what we do with teacher pay raises. Cause until the state decides and actually votes on something, uh, you know, we're kinda just kinda hanging out there to find out exactly what we're gonna be funded and how are we supposed to spend it? And how are we supposed to affect, how's that gonna affect our tax rate? And we're in the process of working on our budget for next year. So it's kind of a, you're kinda going down to the wire as we go along. So it's very important to have a really good CFO that runs your financial part of a district, which we're very lucky to have that. So uh, that's one thing that we as a board, we get updated on the, the budget process from, from now till the end of the summer, we'll be working on the budget. Um, which includes hiring, uh, and where we are with our hiring and our teachers and administrators. Uh, the other thing we're working on is like you talked about, the, the data and monitoring our data usage and how we use it, that's also gonna, that's also going to part of our curriculum. We're trying to finish the, the year strong. We have been through a little change. We, we, you know, we had, we went through a superintendent change at the beginning of the year. So we've got a new superintendent. Uh, so we're, we're relooking at our curriculum and how we're using it. Uh, so we're trying to finish the year strong as we can, as, as for our students. But at the same time, we're preparing for next year with our, our curriculum and our budget and uh, so we can be most effective and uh, so we're, we're, we're doing a lot of work right now.
So do you guys uh, research curriculum or people bring to different curriculum that they're considering, different programs and curriculum that they're considering? And you guys make the decision about that or?
So there is a process for it, you know, there's a process, there are vendors out there. We have a department that actually, curriculum department that actually researches all the curriculum. The vendors come in, they present, this goes up all the way to region ten. Um, and the whole, once, once they filter out, and this is by taking feedback from teachers, from parents, um, from a- anybody in, any, you know, who's gonna be involved with the curriculum. They take all this feedback, they take the surveys, they do the presentations and then when they have, when they're down to the wire, then they come to us. And then they say, okay, this, this, and these are the choices. And then we hear their presentation, why are we selecting one over the other? And at that time, we could decide to vote and say, okay, let's go with this.
So you mentioned something really earlier about that not everybody has an educational background. So is there some sort of requirement that some people on the board have an educational background? Or you could have all lawyers on the board or, so how are you guys trained to be able to make decisions about what programs and curriculum are going to be um, effective in our districts?
So just like any profession, we also have to have ongoing training. Um, you know, as a new board member, you're required to have, I think, sixty hours of training or something. And I think I had over a hundred, a hundred and fifty hours of training. There's lots of opportunities for you to go to several different trainings. So yes, everybody's not gonna be an educator, right? And so how do, how do they know? Well, they go through these trainings, they find out what the best practices are, what is being done. You network. You get to know what other districts are doing. And um, you can do that a couple of times a year. Find out, you know, where other districts come in and find out what they are doing. And, and so this way you keep yourself informed. And this is something that I also learned getting on the board, for example, finance. My husband pays the bill, I spend it. I have no idea. So getting on the finance committee really opened my eyes to so many things. Oh, this is how we do stuff. Especially when you're managing millions of dollars of budget. So it's the same way, if somebody comes in and doesn't know anything about education, getting on those committees, attending those workshops, you just come to know so much. But remember, we have people who are there doing the work, who are the experts. And so you have to trust them at some point and know that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Yeah, we go to training that helps you if you're not, because really before Ms. Hi came on the board, we did not really have any educators on the board. So, but when we went to train, they don't really, you don't learn about all the curriculum and all the, all the other things that, that's going on educational wise, but what they do train you on as a governance role is, you're trained on what questions to ask. Uh, what should you look for in your data? So we can hold them accountable, so we know what to ask, what to look for. Uh, and what results we should be seeing. So that, we are trained to that. But I will say, when, when Ms. Hi was elected last year, she's been a, a very vital important role on our board because she brings that educational background, which I did not realize how uh, important that is to have on a school board. So it, it really brought us a, a, a new perspective on things. Cause I, she can certainly, you know, and you learn from each other. I've learned a, a great deal from her, from an educational standpoint and what we should be looking at and what we should be doing. And uh, and you know, we, I think we've had a pretty good group put together this past year.
We do this a lot.
So what if you begin to see red flags on campuses, an exodus of teachers, um, low educational outcomes? Um, you know, poor star results at a particular school or, um, I know, I, I'll be honest, there are times when like there were district benchmarks that were given and the questions weren't even aligned to the standards. And these were, you know, or these were approved by our, you know, by our, our coordinators of the district, you know, um, so how, how are those educational concerns addressed? Would that be a role of the board? Would that be a role, you know, that like say, hey, you know, as the board, we're seeing something here that's of concern to us. Uh, does that go to the superintendent? Then the superintendent disseminates it down to the campuses? Or how, how, how does that work when you guys see things like, hmm, this ain't, hmm, some, something ain't right here?
Well, we do an evaluation of the superintendent at least once a year. Typically, we do it twice a year, at mid-year and then in the summer. So that's when you certainly, if you start seeing signs of that happening, that's certainly when we would do it at that point, when we evaluate the superintendent, we would certainly bring it to their attention. And uh, for them to either explain to us what's happening, why it happened, and what are we gonna do to solve that problem? Uh, so we, we go str- typically go straight to the superintendent because that's the employee we hire. And it's their job to carry out. The fix it, exactly. It's their job to fix it.
But we've been proactive in that. You know, we don't really wait for a mass exodus of teachers to happen, for us to wake up and say, oh, what just happened? Uh, we are presented um, every month, a list of teachers if they are leaving the uh, district as to why they're leaving. Um, so we, we are well informed um, a- as to what's going on in the campuses. For example, the benchmarks that you talked about, right? Every benchmark, whether it be a district assessment, map assessment, or star assessment, it's presented to us within weeks of the window closing. And then they are also, we get a pretty detailed report as to what's happening, why it happened. They identify the problem and they present the solution, right? Then we do a follow-up the next quarter. So quarterly, we are following this and say, okay, let's look back at the data that was presented to us and where is it now? So we are, we are pretty diligent about being proactive and following up. So we don't have these surprises, you know, that what just happened.
Yeah. Um, how, how are you know, the, the, they say the word, almost half of all teachers leave the district within, leave teaching within the first five years. Um, is that an issue? This is just nationally, but is that an issue that is addressed on a board level? Um, to how do we recruit, attract and retain teachers? Uh, because you know, when, you know, when kids have consistency in the classroom, um, that, you know, that just helps the overall well-being of the school and, you know, of, how, how, how's the board helping kinda? You know, in that particular area?
Well, I think one thing is you start how you treat the employees, how we treat the administration, how we treat the superintendent with full respect and professionalism. Uh, we can give them our thoughts and opinions on how we, uh, and how we treat them. We expect uh, that same working climate to filter down all the way through our campuses. You know, there's, there's different types of leadership. Uh, w- w- we are trying to build now a very collaborative type environment with uh, for our decisions on our administration and campuses. So I think it's not to say that somebody's gotta make a final decision and our superintendent's well aware of that, but teachers like to have input. And when they don't feel like they're getting input, they're just being told kinda dictatorially, you know, you do this because I told you to do it. Uh, you know, they're not gonna be happy workers, you know, they're not, they're not gonna be happy teachers. And I think we need to be conscious of that, that we have, you know, we, we need to be really strong in affirming our teachers because it's a very difficult job that they have. And at the same time, giving them an opportunity to voice their concerns, may not, we may not be able to do everything about every one of them. But we need to hear them out and we need to hear from them. So I think that's important, um, to keep that dialogue back and forth. And one of the things we've done this year, as our new superintendent came on, I met with her and I said, I would really like to have kind of a town hall meeting with our employees, with, with the board.
Directly, no filters.
Just, just go for it.
Right. And they did a little checking and there's maybe only one other district in this area that does it. So, um, we, we had our first one a couple of weeks ago with a group of about sixty teachers.
How'd it go?
They were able to voice their concerns. It was just, it was, the board, full board was there. Uh, it was a posted meeting. The board made no decisions. We just listened. And took notes and uh, and we will plan to have three or four more, more of those during the year. Uh, with different employee groups. We'll probably, next one will probably try to get a group of the principals together. That way we
We have our fingers on the pulse.
We don't, we don't have any surprises and, and we wanna make sure that just as you talked about in the beginning of the show, that, you know, what does the school board do? Who are they? You know, they're just kinda there. We wanna let them know that we're, we're people out in the community. We're just, we're average people just trying to serve our community. Uh, so they need to know that we're approachable. Uh, and we wanna get in front of our teachers to let them know we're approachable. You can email us, you can call us and, and nobody's gonna get in trouble because you called us and talked to us. Uh, so we wanna start changing that climate in our district and, and we've come a long way to get there and we're gonna, we're gonna be much more transparent to our employees, to our teachers. And eventually we will, I've already talked to superintendent yesterday as a matter of fact, that we wanna carry that over to several uh, town hall, public town hall meetings two or three times a year where we have it at a campus. Our parents can come in and.
Even if you're not a parent.
Or, yeah, any stakeholder, businesses or whatever. So, uh, I think if you have that open lines of communication and that they know we're hearing and we're listening, uh, you know, we may, may not be able to solve and do everything they say or we hear, but they know we're, we're working on everything that we can.
And also, Mr. Randall started something which, which is really wonderful is holding ourselves accountable. You know, he, he basically said, you do a survey on how we are performing our job. So the, the top layer, the administration, the cabinet, they are going to survey, you know, to evaluate us.
And the principals.
And the principals. How are we doing? Because we also need to be held accountable, right? So this is something that he started, which I'm so proud of and I'm really looking forward to those, uh, that, that data to see how can we improve. You know, so that's another perspective that we bought into our district.
So the principals can watch the board meeting online, like you, like you said you did, they can watch it. And then I had found this survey that questions, you know, different questions about the board and how we operate and uh, is one dominating the meeting? Just a lot of, a lot of things, questions that asked, that won't take long to fill out, that we can get some feedback. We think we're doing a good job, obviously. But we wanna know what the perception is out there of our teachers and principals and uh, and the people that we have working on, you know, in our district. You know, what, what do they think that we're, we're doing? Because if we need to do some things different, we wanna, we wanna, we wanna change and be, and be better.
So we, we only have a couple more minutes here, but I wanna make sure that we um, answer this question because the, uh, at least in our area, the vote is coming up for school board. And I wanna make sure that our listeners um, have some guidance as to what we should be looking for. So personally, because we're in education and we're talking about education, I would look for a candidate that has an educational background. But it sounds like there's different committees that they need to serve on, that the school board members serve on, like finance and things like that. So what kind of things make a good, well-rounded but, uh, school board? And what kind of things do we need to be looking for?
I think the first thing you need to look for is passion. You know, are they passionate about serving? I- i- it's, this is not, like you said, a, a bipartisan role. This is, this is about kids. You know, you don't have to be an educator to be concerned about kids. And usually it's the parents who serve on the board. A lot of our um, board members like. And usually it's the parents who serve on the board. A lot of our, um, board members, like, hey, maybe he's been a parent, a grandparent, an uncle. So they have vested interest in the community, in the school. So one of the first things I would look for is, yes, it's, it's good to be an educator. That's definitely helpful, but everybody's not going to be an educator on the board, right? You need a little bit of everything. You need all the different spices. So you need to see, are they passionate? Are they involved? Uh, and kind of check the background out. You know, what have they done? Um, are they really using this as a platform for other ambitions? That's important, because people do that, you know, and I've never been in politics till now. And then I realized, people do do that, and I, I don't think that's fair. You know, I don't think that's fair, because this is a trust in your hands, right? So are you passionate? That's, that's the first thing I would look for, is why is, why are you running? What is your purpose for running?
Yep, I would agree with that. Like I said, there's a reason why we're called trustees.
Yeah.
People need to, they need, you need to trust who you're going to vote for that's going to be running your school district. So I think you look for the passion they have for, for students, their motivation for doing it, which should be for the, for the, for the kids. I mean, that's obviously the only reason why we're doing this is to better our community by educating our kids in our community. And, and doing that, you got to support your teachers. So I think you got to look for that, and you look for somebody that's able to work with a team. Uh, you can come in with all the great ideas, and if you're not a team player, you're going to get nothing done. So you got to be able to compromise and work together, and you just got to look at their background. And I would encourage anybody, if, if, every candidate running should, and probably does, post their phone number on their application on the website. And if you've got some real concerns, or you're not sure who to vote for, I would recommend you call them up and visit with them, and have a conversation with them, or find out where a forum is taking place in your community, to go listen to them speak. And then usually afterwards, you can speak to them individually. Uh, so it's, there's opportunities out there that you just really have, but unfortunately, you kind of have to look for them.
Yeah. And actually, um, there's a forum coming up. Our kids are in Mansfield ISD, and there's a forum coming up that, uh, at least I'm going to go to. I hope you will come to, too. There are, the candidates are going to talk about what their concerns are, and why they're running, and things like that. And I believe that Irving ISD has a forum that I saw.
We had several, we've had several forums so far already.
Yeah, we had, we had one last night. We've got another one Thursday night, and then we have another one next Tuesday night.
Yeah, so that's a great way to get involved, or to, to understand what, why these candidates are running, and who they're going to be on your school board, and are they really going to represent you and your community well?
And somebody who understands the demographics of your school. Because, you know, everybody is not going to be college-ready, and everybody's not going to go to college, but we definitely want them college-ready. Or we want that, we know that some folks are going to graduate, and they're going to hit the workforce directly. Are we giving them the tools they need to succeed as soon as they graduate?
Right.
Right? So you have to understand that there's a plethora of, uh, opportunities for these kids, and we have to guide these kids. And so you do the best that you can for every child in your district.
Yes.
For every color, every race, every ethnicity, and you rise above that. And you know that all, you're responsible at the end of the day for each and every one of them.
Right. And I think also voting is very important, so that we make sure we do have the diversity on our boards that are going to be truly representative of our community.
And that's important, because that's, that doesn't really happen, you know? You know, if, if, we would love to see that happen, you know, a, a really, a representation, representation equity in that. And so that would be, you know, great if you can encourage people to step up and run. You know, whether you win or not, who knows? But it's nice to at least try. You never know. You know, when I ran, I had two other opponents with me, right? But I did the best that I could. So you just do it, and if, if it's meant to happen, it happens, and then you serve to the best of your ability.
Yes. Well, uh, you guys are definitely more than a lawn sign now. You know, you say, vote for me! You know, now we, you know, we're so grateful, oh, because we're really getting run out of time here.
Yeah, we barely need another hour. I'm so sad. So we are out of time. Thank you guys so much for sharing with us. And I really hope that our listeners, we had actually a lot of people on Facebook Live that were listening today, so more than usual.
I'm, I'm pumped. I mean, I'm, I feel much better equipped now and informed of what to look for and what you do, and how, uh, how, you know, we as parents can really make a difference in what's happening in our district. So you guys are in a different district, but we're grateful, and now we're, we're ready to hit the ground running.
Get out and vote.
Yes.
Get out and vote. That's really important.
Yeah.
It's one of your most important civic duties, is get out and vote.
That's right. So we always want to take some time at the end of our show to talk about what's going on with Noggan. So what's going on with Noggan Educational Coaching?
So with Noggan Coaching, um, as we have been mentioning the past few weeks, that we are in the middle of, of testing season, whether it's star testing, which begins today. My fifth grader's taking it right now, literally. Uh, or college entrance exams, um, but we want to make sure you're ready, that there really is an art to test-taking. There's content, but there really is strategy as well. And, uh, Noggan, we're here to help you in any capacity, uh, that we can. Uh, so you can, uh, email me at david@nogganeducation.com, or you can call me at, uh, six eight two, four two two, six eight five five.
Okay. I, I was a little concerned that you weren't going to be able to come up with it.
Well, I, I don't, yeah, I was those kid myself. And I don't, I don't call my own phone number, so you know.
Right, okay. So with Noggan Educational Foundation, uh, I've mentioned before that we have a six-week math and reading program called SPARC, which stands for Summers Producing Academically Ready Kids. And we are right in the thick of preparing for our program. So we need volunteers in the DFW area to come and help us to put together. We do a lot of hands-on, fun activities, and so it takes a lot of time for us to prepare those. So we would love for you guys to come out and help us to do that, and we might even, uh, put some pizza on the line there for you, maybe. Um, and also, um, as, as always, we, we do, um, love it when we get support from our listeners. If you would like to donate to Noggan Educational Foundation, go to noggandfoundation.org or schooldazed.com. So next week, we welcome Dr. Anne Van Kleek, a professor at the University of Texas at Dallas in the School of Behavioral and Brain Sciences, and Director of the Collier Center for Communication Disorders. Dr. Van Kleek will share with us how the development, uh, the development, how the development of language skills and literacy of children prior to school is a vital link to their future academic success. So we're looking forward to that. And as always, you can head to our, our website, schooldazedshow.com for more information. And remember, you don't ever have to miss, miss a show. Find us on Spotify, Apple Podcasts, Google Play Music, and Stitcher. And follow us on Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, at Noggan, N-O-G-G-I-N, Foundation. And there we share a lot of, um, great tips for your students and information that you're going to need about our show. And lastly, we want to tell you guys that we are parenting by grace, David and I are. We depend on God to give us the wisdom and strength we need to raise our kids into flourishing adults. And if you would like to know more about that, please feel free to info, to email us at info@scholedazedshow.com. Have a great week.